...is also running late and we miss an Angela, I guess, who joined us shortly. So, I think we got a good turnout from the Housing Authority, the Mission here. So, we appreciate your willingness to meet with us. The first order of the day is everyone had to check their guns at the door before you came in, just in case anybody missed that. Stroud, it's good to have you here. Thanks for being here. Your first meeting here should be entertaining. I understand that there's been an agenda. We don't have one, but we're gonna hand one out, because I saw that agenda.
I've got one. Here you go.
We've got a presentation, Mr. Mayor, that we're gonna make.
All right, we'll do that.
Which will take about thirty minutes. Mr. Montgomery's gonna make it and it's basically sort of where are we? How did we get here? Where are we going? In terms of, you know, how we see things on our side. And if you want to start with any more.
How do we do that? We set aside two hours, so we'll have plenty of time for this.
I would also tell you that I don't think even my board members know, because I just found out about an hour or so ago. We were, NRHA was given an award, will be given an award in October. It's the first one we've ever, first time we've ever won a national award from NERO. NERO is the Association of Housing and Redevelopment Authorities nationally. And we've gotten numerous awards in this year, like we got seven or eight, more than we've ever gotten before. But we've just got word that for our Grandy Village Learning Center, which is an important project in the city, the NRHA's, and I really give the credit to the staff, got an award of excellence. There's only twenty-four given out nationally at that level. So, we feel pretty good about that effort that our staff undertook and the city and HRT and, you know, the whole Grandy project was a really a collaboration of lots of folks and we're sort of excited and proud. So, I wonder if you have any... Ms. Martin.
I understand that Secretary Donovan may be in town, come in town Wednesday night. Mike, I don't know if he's gonna be here in August, Thursday, but he's in the area. I know that he'll be here Wednesday night. So, we'll... Okay, Cheryl. Park, I should have welcomed you too.
Hi.
I'm sorry, I know, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sitting right, the new vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start the clicker person, Mr. Mayor, members of council and board. Trying to see if we're ready to go here.
Who's the clicker person?
We have a clicker or a clicker person?
Are you loaded up?
Yeah, we're loaded, I hope. Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the NRHA board. I'm pleased to be here today. We do have about a thirty-minute discussion and presentation on the organization and also I'd like to share with you, you know, the authority has several challenges that we face every day as the city in declining property values, new home construction, unemployment, foreclosures and funding issues. We're all dealing with the same situations. There's many of these housing needs that NRHA works on daily that are unmet. The decline in fertile housing inventory for lower-income families is a priority for NRHA. Several years ago, there was a formula, thirty percent of your income usually went to either paying the rent or buying a house. In some locations, that number is now fifty percent of your income. So, again, these declining incomes, increased level of competition with buying and selling property has really created some problems in the private market and there's a number of things that NRHA's working in to help solve that problem. Federal dollars for low-income families has generally been pretty stable, working with seniors and persons with disabilities, but also low-income families that are working. One of the programs that we'll be talking about today is called the Housing Choice Voucher Program, typically known by a lot of you as the old name of a Section Eight. Where's a private-public partnership that provides individual stable and safe housing in the private market as rental. HVC provides housing quality and program integrity for the end user and that's the public. One of the things that we'll touch on today is the waiting lists. There's actually thousands of people waiting for these vouchers for housing within Norfolk and also we have thousands of people waiting for housing in our public housing communities. NRHA has done several things to try to move forward here. We're trying to increase single-family home opportunities and we're also trying to increase multifamily home opportunities also. And one of the big influxes of change that we've seen in the last couple of years is the rehabilitation of existing facilities and homes around the city and a decrease, of course, in new construction. NRHA's also worked very hard in applying for additional grants beyond what is called "normal" on the grant line, either from public or private sources. We're trying to be supportive and responsive to these city priorities and the city needs as it relates to housing. NRHA feels that there is a new level of cooperation with budget, grants and planning and the overall administration and relationships between our two entities of the city in Norfolk and NRHA. We do appreciate that level of cooperation. In these challenging times, both the city and NRHA know that we have to make some changes. We have had a major shift in defined programs within the authority. Our main concentration now on assisted housing is for public housing and housing choice vouchers. Those two vehicles are leading the way. Homeownership assistance with rehab loans, emergency repair and home program, which puts people in ownership, are three new programs that are very active in NRHA. We've got to say that there's been some decrease in activity also and some of those decreases are related to levels of funding, but also economic downturns and just the needs of the public. They relate to programs that we've done historically for well over thirty years in acquisition, disposition, relocation, site clearance, new home production and project improvements. If you've taken a look at NRHA's budget this year, you will see that we list each year all of our challenges and all of our goals for the year. And hopefully our goals mesh well with what the city's goals are for what I call an organized business approach to dealing with these problems. First thing I'd like to touch on is our vision and mission statement. If you'll recall, several years ago, we brought to the council a strategic plan that was through 2012. We created a mission and a vision statement in 2007. This five-year strategy has been working for the Housing Authority and this year in 2012, that vision will need to be renewed once again for five more years through 2017. That plan that we currently are in now was made possible by people in this room, by focus groups and other partners in the community, both business and private sector, to help us create that strategic plan. We will be venturing out into that endeavor one more time. There were four major goals, quality housing for all and sustainable mixed-income communities. This has been our driving force for the last four years and hopefully for next year also. Our last two goals, again, are strategic business approach and community support and engagement. These are our four goals as the Housing Authority. This plan is reviewed annually, new goals are set each year and again, five more years down the road, 2017, we will have a new plan. The structure in which we work really hasn't changed a whole lot in the last few years. One work unit that we have been using for the last few years is reinvention. Reinvention took advantage of basically tax credit programs that are out there that we folded in to our business envelope. And as you may know, tax credit programs are on the decline financially with federal, state support and we will probably fold reinvention back into the structure of NRHA this coming year. So then we will have three basic functions. We're under some pressure with what we call central office costs with the budget, because there's a high overhead for what we do. Things that are good for us are rehabilitation and home loans, because we can improve the properties, we can put people in houses and a part of our recent positioning is now underway in the Housing Authority and hopefully we'll have that completed by December. And we've shared that in our budget messages this year and hopefully carry out this plan and announce it in January twenty-seventh of 2012. A review of our, of the housing workforce and the redevelopment workforce, reinvention, administration executives on the board, we just point out that the biggest influx of support financially is in housing operations with federal support for programs. If you'll recall, we received about nine million dollars of AARA funds on the recovery program. We hired three additional people. Their jobs expire this year because we've completed that program. So, when federal money is tied to something similar to what the city would do, special project employees that have a dedicated funding source, a dedicated time period, then after that they're gone. And so, those initiatives also carried out by the Housing Authority. We're trying to plan ahead, we're trying to deliver services that are needed, but also we need your help in determining exactly what those services might be in the future. Let's talk about housing. Housing in itself, as you'll notice, it's eight percent of Norfolk's population. That's within various components of multifamily, the voucher program and privately managed properties that NRHA owns. As a part of this, there's training and self-sufficiency programs going on, workforce development going on, working with youth and young adults, we're working in gang prevention. We have a contract well over a half a million dollars with the police department for community resource officers to work within our communities. We're doing things jointly to try to make it work for all of our housing. And our assisted rental properties, again, you take a look at how much money and people are out there in total numbers, it's three-point-four percent of the city population that live in low-income public housing. With the HCV program, there's an average of about six-hundred-and-eighty dollars a month paid to landlords that go into paying the rent monthly for some of these assisted homeowners. There's always a question about how many public housing units have come down and what's been added to take their place. Our board, the administration, tracks those exact numbers. Over the last several years, we've taken down four-hundred units of public housing, but in place for that, we have added six-hundred units of housing or vouchers to ensure that those individuals did not have a problem finding a place to live. So, in our estimation, we're a net two-hundred ahead of what we've done through demolition. Also, we want to take a look at what we call the waiting lists, assisted rental properties. As I mentioned before, there's thousands of people that come to the NRHA and sign up for housing opportunities. They may live in our city, they may live in other cities wanting to port in to our city. Typically, one out of five people, after they go through the whole application process, qualify for our voucher program. So, that means that we're processing a lot of applications, four, five thousand applications and only maybe a thousand of those people are qualified for homes. And then we have to find the rental opportunities in the city for them. That's a huge undertaking and the Housing Division works very hard at that every day. One of the things I'd like to point out that five years ago we talked about, it was the dispersion of these vouchers or Section Eight across the city. One of the things that we're most proud of is that we have been able to give vouchers to individuals that could find housing anywhere in the city, in any area, and seventy-nine of eighty-three census tracts has these voucher programs working in it. That's a big accomplishment over the last several years. Also, on this waiting list, as indicated, there's over seven-thousand people hopefully waiting for these vouchers. One of the things that we talked to council about several years ago was improving the administration of this program and I might add, as this slide depicts, NRHA's been ranked as a high performer by HUD in this program for accountability, financing and servicing the public. And that's an excellent rating. As you read papers around the country, you hear about housing authority agencies that run into problem with funding for this program and they have to go to the city for multi-million dollars to keep the program going, keep people in housing. NRHA has never faced that issue because of the good management. Also, we want to touch on several privately-owned managed properties that we own in the city. This list is over a thousand units and these are income-producing. Some of them have no restrictions on income, some do have income restrictions. As an example, Mission College, several million dollars was spent on upgrading that. We brought a level of property to a level that reasonable market rate rents were charged, but also we do serve some folks in need of less than fifty percent of AMI. Also, in Park Terrace in Broad Creek, we do have a Section Eight rental assistance program for those units. There are some vouchers in there. So, again, there's a mix of rental opportunities for the public to enjoy and to look forward to renting. Let's talk a little bit about development. There's three main initiatives under the Development Division, real estate, project development and homeownership and homeowner rehab programs. We're also working with VHD and the city on foreclosures in our community, trying to help people out of foreclosure or get out of foreclosure. We are one of the larger house authorities that have mortgage loan officers certified, working for the agency to help in loans in Virginia. We also do a number of emergency repair grants through CBDG funds. Those funds have been exhausted every single year. Rehabilitation loans under home, those funds are well utilized. We've spent over three-point-one million dollars to help a hundred and two property owners with rehab programs in the city. One of the new features that we have is a website, which you can call up for NRHA to look at the properties that NRHA has that we're marketing. It shows the home, the neighborhood and the price and this is a new feature to allow the public to take advantage of knowing what's available in the housing market. Also, development initiatives on a citywide basis. We have a number of these initiatives listed. There's benefits to the tax base of the city, both in residential and commercial development. These opportunities grow the tax base and they also improve the quality of neighborhood and we appreciate the support from the city in working in each one and every one of these neighborhoods. In homeownership, we try to run some numbers on, this year we've put forty-eight people, first-time buyers in homes. Last year, that number was almost double that and that's a reflection on the market. But it provides a service to first-time home buyers and it also generates good real estate sales and also a good level of mortgage loans for our region. The next couple of shots are a couple of houses in Park Place that NRHA purchased, hired contractors to rehab them, put them back on the market. Generally, these houses would sell between a hundred-and-thirty thousand, a hundred-and-seventy thousand. Also, part of the rehab program and putting houses back on the market is the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which we work jointly with the city on that in designated areas that the council has depicted for us. We're gonna touch a little bit on our budget. As you can see, our budget in FY-ten was a hundred-and-three million. The current year, it's approximately ninety-five million, a reduction of about eight million dollars. Most of this eight million dollars of reduction was related to federal reductions in our Under funding resources, there's HUD funds, which is about fifty percent, six percent. And earned income from rents and reserves that NRHA has is about thirty-one percent and city funding is about twelve-point-one million. Each one of these programs is the backbone for NRHA. We have no other sources, the city is our customer. On the two, on the second slide of twelve-point-one million, these are the funding obligations that's carried through with the city. General Fund is about one-point-nine million and CIP from the city is about three-point-four million. These home funds and CIP, independent of the city funds and on CBDG, there's a reflection of four-point-four million there. What that four-point-four indicates, that there is about two-hundred thousand of CBDG funds that were carried over from last year and about eight-hundred thousand dollars of Neighborhood Stabilization Funds that are carried forward to go to that four-point-four number. So, if you look at the numbers overall, it's about a fifty-fifty split between federal funds directly and city funds directly coming from the General Fund, the CIP and the CIPI. One of the other things is where does all this money flow from and what does it mean to the Housing Authority? Again, our budgets generally run about a hundred million dollars. Funding sources from HUD and the city are on a decline and NRHA has used some of its reserves each year to provide us as the Housing Authority with a balanced budget. The funds that we have been able to utilize in the past are being depleted and again, funding is a crucial matter for the Housing Authority as it is with the city. On the city funding breakdown, just between HUD and city funds, you'll see a comparison between 2007 and the present and how the funds have declined substantially from city pass-through money and also from HUD pass-through money. Key challenges for the organization. We know the city's limited in how many dollars they have to use in the community. There are a lot of resources not available to us as a Housing Authority and the city. The Housing Authority has not given cost of living nor merit raises and we've actually reduced the cost of our employees by assuming a part of the health insurance costs and we're a part of the consortium with the city. We've also eliminated a number of positions within the authority to try to keep down our expenses and sometimes that delays our work products. Our other list is increased demand for assisted housing and supportive services. Right now, those services are being met generally by federal dollars. Our operating subsidies for public housing are trending down. The administrative funding for the voucher program is also trending down with the possibility of it being reduced more than what it is today. Something else that we want to make sure everyone understands is when HUD requests us to give them a cost estimate for our program, we run those numbers at a hundred percent. HUD takes a look at that across the country and as an example in this particular program or another one, they may say you get eighty-two cents on the dollar. So, that means we're eighteen cents in the hole with what we think is gonna cost us. There is talk now about taking that number to forty-eight cents. So, you can imagine what that might do to a program that supports housing for thousands of individuals. And, Mr. Mayor, as you may get to talk to HUD officials in the next couple of days, this is one that's very important to the city, the voucher program and full funding of that. HUD, for several years, has never funded us fully for that program and we've continued to provide excellent service and find a way to make it happen.
Cheryl, can I understand that?
Yes, sir.
You have so many vouchers.
Yes.
I forget, you said twenty-eight hundred or...
Yes, sir.
Vouchers. And there's a certain monetary allocation behind each voucher?
Right, the average is six-hundred-and-eighty dollars per voucher.
Right, so, okay, a month.
And that voucher costs us a dollar. The HUD may fund us ninety-two cents or something less than that to carry out that dollar program. So, we're looking for the difference somewhere else to find those funds.
Right.
I think the key, which Cheryl said, but I want to sort of reiterate it, is when we says, when we say it costs a dollar, that's not what we say, HUD says it costs a dollar. They take our numbers, they look across the country and they say, in order to do this one thing, it costs a dollar. That's their, that's their estimate. And they say, we're not gonna give you a dollar, we're gonna give you ninety-two cents or we're gonna give you eighty-four cents. And part of the challenge with that, as well as, they don't tell you until you're into the program. So, you may be working for months.
Six months.
You could be working for six months before you know what they're gonna fund you for work that you've already done. So, it's sort of a double challenge.
Okay, let me ask it a different way. Six-hundred-and-forty-three dollars roughly a month for a voucher and they say, here, you have so many vouchers and you expect to get six-hundred-and-forty-three bucks, but instead you get something like five hundred. Is that...
And that number to support those can fluctuate.
Right, and so, in order to make the voucher good, you've gotta come up with the money someplace else.
Yes, sir.
And that's been, okay, and instead of just reducing the number of vouchers, what they're reducing is...
It's not just in vouchers, Mr. Mayor, it's also in the money that we get to run the regular neighborhood, you know, whether it's Grandy or whether it's Young or whatever. They'll say it's gonna cost you ten thousand dollars, but we're only gonna give you eight. Figure it out. And that's basically the message, figure it out. So, one of the challenges going forward is if they really cost, they really get, in ninety-two, we're finding a way to work with it, but they, you know, federally, if they say it's fifty, there's no way that we can get there.
Are you making some of it up by asking your clients to contribute?
Well, the, it's all, it's all based on their income and how much the rent is paid, so that, that kind of takes care of itself.
Right.
You can't just change those numbers.
If you have, if you can't make it work, then what happens?
We're gonna be looking at you.
Okay, then what happens?
Well, Mr. Mayor, one of the...
You're gonna have a conversation with the citizens.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, maybe not all houses and lorries are, have been able to make it work, be it through their, I don't know, assistance. So, then you just shut down units or take them offline? What do you think?
You haven't done that yet, but I mean, that's what you're facing.
That's the financial problems that other cities have got into. They've had to take vouchers back from individuals that were qualified for them, because they didn't have the funds to pay them anymore.
Well, you don't maintain it as well.
And that's a bad situation.
You don't do, you know, you just start cutting away. You don't have the same amount, number of people there to do maintenance, you don't have the same number of people to run the organization, to collect the rents.
I understand that, but rather than less quality, could you take units offline? What is it?
But I understand how it works. You're funded by the number of units. So, when you take the unit off the line, they're just taking more money back and then you start to lose critical mass to support your overhead and your, and your operation. So, that's not a good scenario either, that just makes it worse. Sort of the smaller you get, then how do you keep your critical mass to run the whole program? Sort of the smaller you get, and how you keep your critical mass to run the whole program, and, you know.
All right, okay.
And we don't know what the feds are going to do, but obviously, it's not great times federally.
Okay, some of the key neighborhood challenges that we have, work both by the city and the housing authority over the years, has really pushed the neighborhood demands high and their expectations of the quality of the products. The stalled housing market, reduce CIP funding, federal cuts in CBDG, and of course, right now, a lot of unknowns about the federal funding, is all these issues that we have to deal with as a housing authority on a daily basis, and I'm sure the city's dealing with the same things. Trying to move to a sustainable budget, this year, we offered retirement incentives to forty of our employees, very similar to the city's retirement incentive. We had eighteen employees take advantage of that particular program. For the last five years, we've had what we call Personnel Control System, where every individual position hired in the housing authority has to go through a systematic review of the department, making a recommendation to fill vacant positions through HR, through budget, and to myself to justify that position being filled. If not, the position's eliminated, it could be downgraded, it could be moved to part-time, or it could be moved to trying to find a volunteer effort to do it. And there's been a number of those reductions made by the authority over the last several years. One of the things that, again, that I want to touch on is that this restructuring and implementation plan that we hope to bring forward over the next six months, and will be recommended in our FY-13 budget, may possibly include additional reductions in personnel programs and services for us to be sustainable. That is to be found yet over the next several months, and we're working very close with city administration on that effort also.
Cheryl, I should know this, but what retirement system are you in?
We're under VRS.
VRS?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One of the things that I think, to try to be proactive as an agency, under other key initiatives, we've just completed a property portfolio of all of our properties that we own citywide. We were contacted by HUD about a month ago, asking us if we would be willing to be a national product or a pilot for this study of assessing all of our properties for what the needs might be in the future. We've agreed to do that. Later this month, HUD will be contacting us with what we call evaluation tools that will augment with our efforts to try to assess values. We've shared this with the planning department as a possibility of assessing other neighborhoods, let alone our own public housing neighborhoods, as a possible tool to try to look forward for capital needs, improvements, quality of life type things that could happen in the future. I'm in the opinion that in the next couple of years, if these tools work out, and a product from Norfolk and maybe five or six other cities across the country produce a product that HUD can evaluate, they may also make this a requirement of all public housing authorities in the country. And again, I think a lot of that is based upon HUD's opinion of the housing authority and how we do business, that they want to include us into those major studies. And as you know, there's over fifteen-hundred public housing authorities our size in the country, so for us to be in the five or six they put, that's good. Another piece which the board undertook this year with the administration was to fund a study by William &amp; Mary. Hopefully, that will be completed here in the next few months. We'll be able to share some of that with the council today, but also a complete report a little later this year. Also, another endeavor the board has agreed to is an energy performance contract that we would have with a company. We have completed an audit of all of our energy needs. We're looking for enhancements to reduce our energy bills. We feel that we're pursuing a fifteen-million to fourteen-million-dollar conservation and CIP needs for public housing. With that, we think over the next twenty years, we will save thirty-five million dollars. And again, we're one of the public housing authorities in the country pursuing this energy performance, and you've seen some of the energy performance initiatives by other cities and housing authorities around the country, and we are also in that line to try to save funds over the next twenty years. The other piece, which, we've designed a new building at nine-ten Valentine. We are holding off on doing anything with that because of the market, and as you probably know, we also have our building downtown at 201 Granby with a broker for sale, and those two pieces need to mesh financially, and right now, based on the market, they're not meshing.
Cheryl, let me get...
Yes, sir.
Talk about that for a second. You know, I've heard about the proposal of putting that building in Stone Bridge, and essentially, that's what you would be doing while you already have, you know, an operation there. I really believe it would have a tremendous impact on Stone Bridge, Middletown Arch, and Broad Creek. Stone Bridge, the real estate values there dropped between eight and thirteen percent as a lot of the communities in Norfolk. And I believe if you put your operation there, you are going to negatively, further negatively impact, you know, Stone Bridge Manor and the other, Broad Creek and Middletown Arch. Now, when Stone Bridge was developed, I was one of the members of council, well, I was probably the only member of council, who believed that the lots were priced a lot higher than they should have been. I believed that the price of the lots had been maybe fifteen thousand dollars less. That homeowner could have put that fifteen thousand dollars in more bricks than, you know, a lot of vinyl that we see. And I really hope that you will rethink that, trying to put a building over in Stone Bridge, where all of the residents in our public housing communities who need services that you offer would be coming there. I don't think that that's a very, very wise thing to do for that community. While it's probably easier for you because you own the properties there, and it's just a matter of redesigning it and doing some things to it, I don't think you, I think you're being insensitive when it comes to the people who live in Stone Bridge. So I hope that that training right there, the user, you know, will kind of slow down a little bit and rethink that. I just don't believe that that's fair to those persons that we've asked to come in and spend over three-hundred thousand dollars. Years ago, there was an effort to use an old piece of property on the other side of Stone Bridge called Atomic Property, and the development was going to, you know, put up industrial development there, and there was going to be a road to come down right beside where your building is now. And that would have had, that's something that we had to, you know, the council decided not to do because of the impact it would have had on that community. And I just really, really believe that, if you think about home values, the market that we're in, and the different things that, in the economy, that are causing home values to decrease and be less, and then for us to do things that would further bring home values down, I just don't think it's fair for those persons that we, you know, catered, not catered, to marketed to for those properties there.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I want to piggyback, I respectfully disagree. Currently, the people come to that building now for services for, what is it, Section Eight vouchers, you have the applications process there now. You know, in looking at this, one of the indicators for attracting commercial and retail development at the highest level was being able to create jobs and a community with walkability and people with disposable incomes. Understanding that we couldn't get there totally from a rooftop standpoint, it was important to try to create opportunities in terms of jobs where people would be able to have buying power, go across the street, rather be to the grocery store or restaurant, and so on and so forth. The job that they were talking about relocating to that particular area, all executive-level positions, that they would be moving out of that building into that area, that I think that would help bring more stability to that community, and instead of negatively impacting the home values, lifting the home values in that particular area. We've done a market study about four years ago that alluded to that very fact, in terms of how we could attract commercial and retail development at the highest level and be able to sustain it without having to get the city to, having to underwrite the opportunities in that community. So I think that's a very critical piece in terms of adding to that community, because when we went back and looked at every parcel that we had available, that we could put market rate, understanding that we had challenges and that we had to ensure that we took care of the family that left, whatever community that was being towed down, and that the numbers a third, a third, a third made sense, and you had to try to create more rooftops with disposable incomes. And this comes from the professionals that do this every day. That's one of the reasons why we were able to, again, have the types of conversations with some of the grocers, some of the commercial entities that are interested in that area. And I know that there are some people in Stone Bridge, you know, Middletown Arch, you know, Broad Creek, but when you look at what's there now, you've got a school warehouse, you've got trucks coming in and out of there every day, you've got Balken, which is right beside Stone Bridge. So to me, those uses are the types of uses that we should be trying to relocate, or the waste transfer station.
You know, I don't think that those communities we're speaking of need any more stability. You know, you've got people paying over three-hundred thousand dollars for a home, so they're pretty stable. It's always, in such a long ticket there, there's always the African-American communities that's impacted. Building in Lachman, building in Edgewater, building somewhere near West End, it's always the African-American community that suffers the impact of things that NRHA might want to do. So I still, you know, and Mr. Redd, but I don't know what the hell you were talking about, I don't know what the hell you just said. You did a lot of talking, but I don't know what you said, you know, rooftops and all these euphemisms. The fact of the matter is that the African-American community suffers the brunt whenever NRHA wants to do something. The community has been meeting, and I hope that they can galvanize themselves to prevent this from happening. It's just unconscionable for you to sell those lies, to attract those persons over there with all their marketing that you did, and then to come and put something over there that's going to bring the property values down. And then, you know, and then as we go on further, I'm going to talk a little bit more about your Section Eight vouchers and all of the things that you have just, you know, made NRHA look like a just great, great organization, that after you finish your project, I'm going to talk a little bit more about it.
I know what the hell I'm talking about, Mr. Redd, just to piggyback on what you said again. It's unfortunate, like you said, I mean, you've got people out there that may not understand this, but I believe Mr. Montgomery, myself, and others met with the community, talked about this particular project. And although you may think that the community has stability, it's very fragile. And since you want to go to the African-American piece, I don't know too many African-American communities in this, communities within the city of Norfolk that have commercial and retail development at the highest level and have job opportunities in it. And so what we tried to do was create a community that's not being subsidized by the entire city, tax dollars that are being created in other places, but try to use the fabric of the community that exists and the tax base that exists in that community to create a thriving community that has economic development at the highest level and create jobs and opportunities. People in that community should have a grocery store, they should have quality of life amenities like any other community.
But how is an office building going to bring these things?
Because that's not the only office building that is planned for them.
How is that one building going to create this? If that's the case, then if a CSV or the different vendors who would do it in business, they would come there based on the incomes that are already there, not this one, not this one office building.
That's not the only one that's planned, you've got a metal child.
But the disposable income, the disposable income that exists in these communities already warrants the things you mentioned.
That's not true.
The disposable income, the disposable income in Stone Bridge, Middletown, and Broad Creek already warrant these persons bringing their facilities to the area.
What all do is that, it does not...
This one office building, this one office building is not going to do anything to greatly improve, that's not going to do anything to improve the disposable income.
All I'm saying to you, it does not. We look at the numbers every day.
Okay.
It does not. We do not have enough critical mass to support nor sustain commercial development at the highest level. We're not talking about saving.
I guess we can see that next weekend, I'm going to stop right there because I'm opposed to it, and I'm going to do everything I can do to prevent that office building from going into Stone Bridge Manor.
Okay. You know, we're not here to make that decision today, and obviously, it's going to be dependent on, you know, the turn of the economy anyhow for your own building and stuff, sort of.
Okay, I'd like to talk a little bit about the age of our public housing communities. As you'll know, the majority and some of our larger are almost sixty years old. The funding that we have had to support our public housing over the years has been somewhat reasonable, but also not to the level that was needed. On point three, the historic average, we've been averaging about six million dollars a year, so for the last five years, we've received about thirty-one million for upgrades on public housing. Currently, our budget is seeing a reduction of probably a million dollars in that, and of course, HUD across the country is cutting these capital funds to keep our public housing up. This formula is changing, it's not meeting our current needs, and the funding continues to be reduced. We have to maintain these communities, and it's a very costly matter, and again, I think the entire country is facing this same issue. I'd like to talk a minute about the, as I mentioned, the William &amp; Mary Mason School Business is doing two studies, one in Central Brambleton, it was a conservation neighborhood, and the other one is the Housing Choice Voucher Program that is administered by the housing authority and has been for several years. In Central Brambleton, you can see that the investment on the part of the city through various grant programs has produced a wealth of revenue and value in that community, both in homes, infrastructure, and the stormwater fund which assisted in the drainage. Those types of examples are the reasons why the city and the housing authority invest in neighborhoods to lift those neighborhoods, both the property values and the land values. We do our best. On the housing voucher program, this program allows for direct payment of funds to landlords across the city by electronic payments. And as you can see, that program in itself has produced twenty-one million dollars of direct payments to these landlords with rental properties. to these landlords with rental properties, whether it be if they own one unit, five units, or 20 units in a building. Those individuals are living within these communities and within the housing, and many are mixed-income housing developments with the voucher program. So it has a tremendous economic value, and that analysis is underway right now, exactly what that generates within the city.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
After a person gets a voucher.
Yes.
And they develop the relationship with a landlord.
Yes, sir.
What oversight does NRHA have in the relationship between that resident and that particular community? I guess I'm going to kind of clarify what I'm trying to say. In a lot of instances, there are communities that have been stable communities over the years that believe that the Section 8 voucher program sometime produces new members of the community that don't have the same compassion for that particular community as the person who's been there. So what does NRHA do in terms of oversight to make sure that these residents who get the vouchers, that come into these stable communities, don't create a negative impact on them?
Well, Mr. Redd, the premise of the program is, one, that the Housing Authority has a right to go and inspect the property that a landlord would like to rent. So if he has a unit, say he has a five-unit building, he wants to rent one unit, the Housing Authority will go in and inspect the building and that unit to make sure it meets certain standards of quality for HUD. And those inspections occur annually. So it's not just give them a voucher, go live somewhere, and we forget about them. It's a constant review, both on the part of the applicant about whether they're working, what their income is, what's the quality of the housing. So that's a piece that is monitored annually for each recipient of a voucher. Each voucher holder then has certain responsibilities, to be a good neighbor, take good care of the property, inside conditions, outside conditions of the house. If there's any complaints, and we go and inspect a complaint, find a violation, see if the landlord or the person residing in there, that problem's got to be responsible for one of those two people. So the landlord could actually lose his right to have vouchers in his building. Or the recipient of that voucher, if they broke one of the rules that allows them to get a voucher, they would be told that you can't live here under the voucher program if you want to pay your own rent, continue to rent from the landlord without the voucher. That's fine, we can't control that, but we will not allow them to live there with that voucher.
How can adjacent neighbors complain? Just call NRHA?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we do get those complaints, and we do look into every one of them. I hope that answers your questions, Mr. Redd. The next slide talks about, you know, trying to work through the voucher program with landlords. We have a coordinator that works with all of our landlords, and as you've noticed, we have over 1,200 landlords throughout the city. What this does is make landlords comply with better conditions of the house, both inside and outside, and that allows for better maintenance of some of these properties, and it may allow for additional work to be done on the properties so that the HCV funds can continue to come in to that rental property. So the property's inspected, the residents are working, the property has to be qualified, residents have to be a good neighbor, and there are issues and problems with the property. The resident and the voucher is at risk, or the landlord is at risk.
How do you deal with apartment buildings? You got an apartment building of eight, 12, and you got a couple of tenants in there, and you're not going in the actual unit per se, you're looking at the exterior of the entire building, but you might have a problematic situation. How you, how do you address that?
If the problem's inside the building, in that unit, we can go in the unit.
But I mean, in terms of an inspection, I mean, you guys, do you guys do yearly inspections? Or do, you know, when someone alerts you of a situation, or if someone thinks that the person is Section 8? I mean, what triggers you guys coming out on an annual basis to make sure that, because you get situations where you get families that are in a situation where they don't want to complain because they don't want to get put out?
Sure.
And they, for one reason or another, they like that particular unit. And so whatever issues that are going on within that particular issue absentee landlord or if maintenance and upkeep of the property is not being maintained. So like I said, what triggers you guys to come out on an annual basis, quarterly basis, whatever the case, to make sure that the property is in the shape that you would want, we would want our citizens living?
Okay. There are several things that could trigger an inspection. One is that, let's take a 10-unit apartment building as your example. If there are three voucher holders in that building, and the other residents in there are paying market rate rent, and the landlord wants to rent to those three units to voucher holders, he has no tenants in there, it's empty right now. The Housing Authority, once they're contacted, they have to go and inspect the exterior of the property, yards are cleaned, grass is cut, building's painted, front steps are not falling off, all the general things that you would look at as quality of the property and being safe and sanitary. And then on the inside of the units, we inspect the heating systems, the electrical systems, the physical condition of the rooms, make sure all that's in. And then the landlord is told, you can rent this to a voucher holder. So if one voucher holder comes in and rents, that person has certain rules that they have to live by. If the person who lives next door complains to the landlord, this guy living next door to me with a voucher is doing this or that, staying up late, banging on the walls, that landlord can either enforce it himself as a tenant or renter, or that landlord could call us and say, we're getting complaints about this tenant, and we could look into it also. So it's kind of a double-check system, both with the landlord and us. Each time another person moves in, the second tenant, we would come out for a second inspection to make sure that unit and property's still in. So that might be two inspections in one year. If the third unit got filled that same year, that would trigger a third inspection to go out there, inspect that third unit. If we had complaints about one of the other two units, we could inspect those units also. And there is some hesitancy on the part of some people who call in and complain about it. But the main thing that we have to keep in mind, the individual that's living there has rules to live by, they do not want to lose their voucher. They just don't get kicked out. They lose their voucher. They do not get that voucher back. They have lost that voucher. The landlord doesn't want to lose the voucher either because he knows that he can collect that rent from that tenant as long as they pay their proportion share every month. So it's a good tenant, working, revenue's coming in, and everybody wants to keep their property in good shape.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Going along with that, is there any, do you have any programs that make sure that your tenants, your residents that have school-aged children, that they are in good standing with the school? And when I say good standing, I mean attendance, attending class because of Norfolk's push to, for on-time graduation and making sure that, it's easy to flash a report card and say to the students in school, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're actually in school attending class. Or if we're looking at grades, do you have incentive programs for residents with school-aged children, that if the students are successful in school, that there's some kind of reduction or other types of incentives for them in the program?
Okay, I'll probably call on our chief of housing because that's getting down into detail. I want to make sure we answer all those questions. Donnell Brown is our chief of housing.
Yes, we do have, not quite as extensive as you're saying, but we have two security officers that are on our staff who work very closely with the public schools and our children's safety. They notify us, especially in public housing, when children have been missing, whether they've been kicked out of school, whether there's been any kind of issues. Those officers, a male and a female, will immediately go to the school, get the information, then go to the house to find out what's going on with the, in the household, what would cause this child to be involved in any kind of activity that would kick him out. They work with the schools to make sure that while they're out of school, they get all the information they need as far as their coursework and trying to keep them abreast of what they need to do in school. So yes, we do have a couple of programs that engage the family to help support the student who may be kicked out of school.
Now, the interface on the voucher program?
On the voucher program, it's a little bit more difficult, and because our clients are spread all over the city, as was stated, we've got people in 79 of our 83 census tracts. It's a lot easier when you have public housing because it's confined and it's in the area. We, again, as Mr. Montgomery pointed out in the beginning, we don't get money from HUD to do any kinds of social services. The money that we do get is either from our board giving us some money, or we've gone for grants. And we've been aggressively pursuing grants to support some of the issues that we have.
One of the inventories, maybe this will help a little bit too, was vouchers. For instance, if there's a complaint about a voucher holder with children, we know exactly how many children they have, what their ages are, and where they go to school. So if there was an issue like that, that could be checked, to say, there are school with eight children living there, one's 14, one's 13, and then we could check through our system and find out if those children are problems. We could then follow the parent in and talk to them about problems in school or in the neighborhood, and that they have to be a good neighbor, hopefully they're not bringing those problems home.
As an administrator, I've used that once in four years, but I think there's a disconnect between the Housing Authority and the schools, the individual schools. Now, if you're communicating with central administration, that is not being filtered down to the individual schools. And one thing that I would recommend is that contacting the middle and high schools, which are dealing with this. In fact, some of the schools that didn't make the AYP, it was because of the on-time graduation that's starting to get them. And, you know, we need to make sure that this information's being provided to the school administrators who are dealing with those kids on a day-to-day basis and know that there's resources out there where they could contact because it's not there. And whether you guys come to a presentation when this, when all the administrators are there and discuss how we can have a better relationship with you, because this is becoming so serious now in our schools with dropouts, that there's a way to prevent a dropout because by getting a parent more involved in their child's education. Because I'm going to tell you, when a kid comes to us at the high school level, that a lot of our parents are starting to say, it's their responsibility, now it's their education. It's not like elementary school or even middle school where they hold their hand and walk them to school, or they're involved in their child's education. There's this mentality at high school level that you're on your own. And so, you know, if we call a parent, sometimes we don't even have the right phone numbers to even get ahold of a parent. We have to hold kids, sometimes if they've brought drugs to school, we have to hold them the whole day, we can't just put them out in the street because the parents aren't providing accurate information. But you guys might have that, and we can work together and have a better partnership and prevent some of our kids from dropping out of school.
So I'd be glad to work on that communication.
If their voucher, if their student, I correct if I'm wrong, but even a parent could lose their voucher if a student is disciplined at school, if my correct, if they are long-term suspended or expelled from school.
There's nothing in the federal regulations that say that, that for any assistance. At this point, there's nothing in the regulations that say whether they're in public housing or voucher that says that we have to take their housing away because there's an issue with your child's school at this point.
Is there even, and I think the point is a great, is there a list that's provided to the various schools, do they have any idea who's actually living within Section 8 units? I mean, I don't know how you even.
Whenever, when they ask for that information, we give it to them.
How would they know to ask? I mean, how would they?
Hardly.
What would trigger them asking? I mean, what they're basically confronted with is a child who's not coming to school for instance. And, I mean, you know, it sounds to me like, I mean, we can't solve this here, but the disconnect Tommy was talking about, it sounds like it's worthy of a discussion.
I think part of the issue though is, we can do this later, is, so if you know they are getting a voucher, you can't do anything on our end in terms of, other than letting know that, what does that mean in and of itself as opposed to the paying their own bill?
But if you, I believe though, you do have in your contracts with this about breaking the law, and some of the offenses that happen in school are law violations, and they can lose their.
That would be helpful.
Right.
And we can do that in our, you know, if they break the law in their, in a public housing community, and we know about it, there are things that we can do.
Right.
And you can set, so you certainly can do that, and we'd certainly give you whatever information we're allowed to give you.
And it's not to be used as a threat, but to be worked as a partnership because of what I was just saying, that the parents are just not as involved in their child's education at that level, and if there's a way to bring them to the table and say, hey, we want to make this community a better place, whether it's gang-related issues or, you know, just teenagers being teenagers, you guys have that information much better than the schools do. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've hit the phone and I get wrong phone numbers when I'm calling a parent to let them know what their child has done, but if you guys have those phone numbers, and there could be some privacy issues with this, I understand, but they do have to prove address with the school system and where they go to the school.
We'll certainly talk to Dr. Nutley.
It would only help. I mean, we're just, that's where we're losing our kids.
Absolutely.
My question to you, Sean, would be, you know, one of the issues that we've talked about time and time again as we distribute these vouchers, that we're not concentrating, that we're not reinventing the wheel as we get farther away from the tradition of public housing, that we're not creating public housing communities inside of neighborhoods with single-family dwellings. And so to look at the census, the poverty tracks, do you guys have the data to see if we're impacting census tracts that are already?
We do, we look at that.
And we have that data. We have, we track that data, and we know exactly where folks are living in the city and under the program.
We had a, we had a presentation, Mr. Vice Mayor, three, four months ago, two months ago, that shows exactly that, both in scatter plots and sort of numerical data, how many, I think Ms. Brown may have it, but how many of our Housing Choice Voucher Program holders are in non-impacted neighborhoods?
Forty-two percent.
It's a bunch.
I just hope the child would hold that line so you know that.
You know, it's sort of the, darn if you do, darn if you don't, as we move out into non-impacted areas of the city, because there's a desire to do so, then you sort of get back, well, now you're impacting another neighborhood.
But it has to be distributed.
Well, that's what we're doing.
I mean, when you begin to look at, one day you're going to move into the St. Paul quadrant. And those folk got to go somewhere. And so it has to be.
Twenty-two percent.
Vice Mayor, what we can do, and I'll be glad to provide this to the city council, just what we provide the board, is a citywide map that locates all the areas in the city with vouchers, both in impacted, non-impacted areas. And we can also provide by census tract, how many units are in each census tract citywide. That's available. We have given that to council in the past years, several years ago. This is the information that we do share with our board.
We've worked really hard, the staff has worked really hard over the last number of years, sort of, we're in 90% of census tracts, and we're inching up close to half being in non-impacted areas. So we're working on that.
The ones we're not in is the airport and the naval base are two of them. Can't put those units there.
There's an awful lot of stereotyping that goes on associated with Section 8 voucher holders. In my community, I hear a lot about it. And in my community, I hear a lot about it when I check it out. It's not a Section Eight voucher holder, it's somebody else. And, and by and large, I would say Section Eight vouchers have been a positive in my community because they have sparked investment in properties that were starting to get marginal to get that tenant. They have to invest in it. And as Cheryl said, people are motivated to keep the voucher. So, I think there's a lot of stereotyping that goes on with that, and, and we all need to work to put an end to it. It's a good program.
We'll continue to give you that information if you want it.
But as you strengthen some of these fragile communities that were one time fragile, and you continue to push that envelope, again, St. Paul Quadrant, over six hundred units is in, and you begin to look at where, where, where the, where does the opportunity exist for these families? You, you, you gotta really, gotta really be sensitive to that, because there are just certain communities now that could absorb that. And it's those same communities, it's the Alexandria Streets, it's the Coleman Place, it's the South Side, and we don't want to create a, a situation where as, we talk about choice communities, but when you disperse and you, you don't do it in such a way where you put all of the, the foundation in place for the, you know, the, the educational piece, the workforce piece, and the homeownership opportunities. So, I would hope that we would approach that with the same guiding principles, when you begin to look at relocating families and not just, you know, giving them a voucher, because when you give that voucher to them, you can't control where to go.
They could go to Memphis, Tennessee with a voucher.
Right, right. But they could also go to wherever the opportunities exist.
Exactly.
Right, and so you begin to look at where reasonably the opportunities exist within the city, and you could draw a map, you look at that map, you could look at rents in certain areas where these families can go to. But the voucher only covers but so much at the end of the day.
In regards to the St. Paul Boulevard Quadrant, the Director of Planning made a presentation some time ago, and it's my understanding that the persons who already live in that particular area of the city should have that same opportunity to live there as opposed to being shuttled, you know, in other places in the city. That housing is going to be made for the residents who actually live in that particular area, and it's not going to be another gang, you know, which receives you, of course.
Mr. Rick, let me say something. The Board for a number of years has been pretty well committed to allowing people to return in the community if we're redeveloping it. And I know that necessarily hasn't been the case historically, but that's the way we've done, and we've certainly done that consistently in the last number of years. And I, I can't speak for future Boards, but I can tell you that our, our current Board, you know, we've gone on record that that's something we want to do. I do think it's important as it relates to St. Paul Quadrant, and I say this every time it comes up, we are so far away in my estimation from doing anything real there, real meaning, a real redevelopment, because of money. I don't see a funding source in the near future, near meaning three to five years, to really do anything there like we hope to do at some point, whether that's city money or federal money. So, I tell, whenever we have an opportunity to tell folks, the public, I say, listen, we want to do it, we've been working with the city, we're planning, in fact, we just got a new planning grant for two, three hundred thousand dollars, I think to do a little bit of work there. But, you know, it takes tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars to make this happen, and there's just no money right now.
Now, that plan, that, that planning grant that you've got, doesn't that lead to a big pot of money?
We're hopeful it does. It tends, it tends to give you a leg up to the next plan.
You have two hundred and fifty thousand under the Choice Neighborhood Program, it's a planning.
Yes, and so, you're, you're in a better position, if you get this one, to get the next one, but the next one in and of itself doesn't get us there either. It's a much bigger project, and, you know, we're chasing it.
But I was privileged to meet with the HUD officials and talk about that grant and where it might lead, and it needs to be very clear in everybody's mind that HUD insists that every resident have a right to return to a redeveloped community, and that in this case, unlike Broad Creek, no different requirements can be imposed on the residents for return. Where Broad Creek, we could insist on employment, the same criteria for return to a redeveloped area would apply as would apply to any of our public housing.
That's our current thinking.
Right, and, and HUD was, was very specific about that, and if you're not prepared to commit to that, you can't proceed to give funding to do what we would like to do.
One of the things that I've said at this table on several occasions is that some form of redevelopment of Tidewater Park has been talked about for at least ten years. And during that ten-year period, nothing has been done to make preparation for the residents who already live there. Let's start with the senior citizens. We, none of us around here probably can imagine the anxiety that some of the seniors go to bed not knowing what tomorrow might bring when it comes to, you know, where they live. And one of the things that I really believe that you should have done as a Board, and can still do as a Board, is to make preparations for your seniors who live there. You know, you've got some tracts of land around here that you own, that you can put up some other mid-rises like you did with Hunter Square, like you did with Frankel Arms, to make preparation for your seniors. And then, don't, you know, use those units again and gradually, you know, move on. You can, you can find those persons, as you have done and continue to do, who are close to being homeowners, and get them into your home net program and get them to be homeowners, and don't use those units anymore. And then, the most important piece are those families there who have children. So, I, I really believe that you should take a dedicated initiative to start making preparation so it won't be looking like, well, we're moving black folks again around. And that's exactly what's going to be said, and unless you do something ahead of time, that's exactly what's going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Rick.
So, you're not proposing any, well, I guess it's choice communities now, but Obama, Obama's new initiative changed the name, but.
We're not proposing anything at this point because we just don't have enough, it's too early. We don't have, we don't have money. That program's a new program, it hasn't even been fully defined, and I, I think we're years away personally. I'd like it to happen tomorrow, but I don't.
What do you mean, it hadn't been defined?
The, the Obama Administration's successor to, to Hope Six will morph over the next couple of years, in my opinion, in terms of what the rules are. For example, the HUD folks told Bob Layton, when he was there, that no longer would be able to institute the rules we instituted in Broad Creek. That could change next week or next month or with the next election of Congress or the next election of the President. So, we don't have the money to really start doing a lot there. We have made some preparations, we've talked to lots of people, we've had lots of focus groups, we've told them exactly where to know. The city ran a planning process there, or sort of a pre-planning process in the last couple of years, but.
So, HUD said you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to implement the same guiding principles in Broad Creek?
That's what they told us.
When I met with HUD, I mean, what, from a, what, construction standpoint?
No, no, no. From a rules. The standpoint of, in Broad Creek, you could return what you had to be employed unless you were a student, or there, there were, were criteria that were different than those applied to the rest of our housing areas.
Right, those are the, those are the, the criteria that we, the guiding principle that we put in place, but we made the argument to HUD, if, if you, if you don't do that, then you essentially end up what you, what you had first.
Right.
So, you wasted tax and pay a dollar to build twenty-first century public housing if you don't change the mindset of people when you go in and do that. So, I mean, so that's the.
That's what they're saying now.
That, that will have to be a topic of discussion, but also remember, we're going to dilute the impact of concentrated poverty in any plan that we do for that area. By bringing in more people, we may get all of the existing residents back, but the area is large enough that we can dilute that impact by generating more mixed income.
Sure.
But we're five hundred million dollars, by estimate, away from being able to do it, and I don't, yeah, I'm not, I'm not hearing anybody stand up and raise their hand in this environment and say, I know where it is. So, we, we, we need to be hopeful, but we're some way away from being able to achieve that level of, of commitment.
All right, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you, Ms. Layton. What I'd like to do is move on with our slide on added services. As you know, NRHA does have seventy-one years of experience in dealing with housing and community development, creating a lot of LLCs and private partnerships to make things work. Also, we have a very knowledgeable staff, and we are recognized as a best practices agency. What we want to do is to make sure that we bring forth a return on investment, that we have good quality control and customer service, and we're responsive to whatever the city's needs are. We do have an amazing legislation under Title Thirty-Six that gives us some very unique responsibilities and authority. What can we do more for the city? We'll be glad to work with the city on implementing plans that the city approves and moves forward with. We'll continue to work in neighborhoods. We want to work with greater efficiencies, and again, we have seventy-one years of experience in the business, which we don't want to forget. What we need from the city is more frequent and formal communications like we're having today, a collaborative conversation on housing policies as we're having today, and a clarification of the role of NRHA from the city perspective, not from an NRHA's perspective, but from your perspective, and agreement on reasonable program delivery costs and joint development of an accountability systems for the programs and services that you allow us to do in this city. The last slide is, let's talk about maintaining sustainable consensus-driven relationships, creating a work plan together, and determining reliable and reasonable funding that may come out of that process, and reviewing the effectiveness and efficiencies of services without duplication on either side. And those are some very general but very poignant type points that I think we can all work to, and from time to time, we've talked about those things, and I think there is an effort to deliver on our part. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council on the Board, this concludes the presentation.
Cheryl, can you go back a couple of slides back up?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you, because I hear this. Clarification, yeah, clarification role for NRHA from a city perspective. And, and Shep's, you know, talks to me every now and then about that. What do you, what do you mean by that?
On the collaboration?
On the clarification of role, I mean, is it more, that has more to do with your development?
That has a lot to do with development. I think one of the things in our last couple of meetings with council is that we have to remember that HUD paid a hundred percent always of anything to do with public housing, and those numbers now are being brought into danger, reductions, in us trying to maintain as much public housing as we have. As a part of that.
So, we should have a joint discussion about how much public housing we should have?
Yes.
Together with the city?
Yes, and I think the next piece, which we've kind of, NRHA's allowed to, to use to meet the housing needs, is the voucher program, because those can go anywhere. NRHA doesn't make the decision of you have to move into this apartment, or you have to move to this city, or you have to move to this state. That decision is made by the voucher holder. And so, you know, that has been meeting some of the housing needs, but as the Vice Mayor and others have raised questions, council needs to fully understand how that program works, and maybe some additional elements that we can maybe blend into that program to help other problems in the city, too.
Cheryl, you said you have twenty-eight hundred vouchers.
Yes.
That, that, do you have vouchers that you haven't, that you haven't disseminated?
We have vouchers that come back that have to be reissued. I don't know what that number is right now.
I'm going to try to say this, but I'm getting really complicated. HUD gives us funding right now for about thirty-five hundred vouchers. Depending on how much, how much money is paid for each resident determines how many vouchers we can actually use, because they gave us a pot of money, and then we go from there. Currently, we have twenty-eight hundred leased. We have funding for about another two to three hundred families that we can lease up, and then we will have reached our limit with the funding we have available to service clients.
And that's at a dollar per dollar?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so as you go through that reviewing process, you've got twenty-eight hundred out there, you could, you know, you'll be able to grant applications to another two or three hundred in the same time you've got some coming back in?
You've got to balance those two things, money and vouchers, and how many people are holding vouchers. Some people lose them, that number comes back in, we can reissue it, because we have the money for it. So, it's a balancing act.
Okay.
I was going to have to piggyback on your question to say that, you know, how many of these, these recipients of these vouchers actually come from Norfolk? I mean, we get a lot of, that come from other areas.
Our porters aren't that high. In fact, and that's one that one of our commissioners has taken a great look at, is how many people port in and how many people port out. And it's sort of about even number of how many people port in and port out into the city of Norfolk.
We're hired in this, how about surrounding areas?
Most of the, most, let me, let me back up, because first preference goes to Norfolk residents on our waiting list, public housing and Section Eight. So, we always give that first preference. The amount of people that port in, and, and I think in every quarter is around maybe forty or fifty, and we have that equal amount porting out to other areas.
Port in, is that what you?
Porting, meaning they come from other communities.
It's always been my sense that the vouchers went, if anything happened, vouchers went outside the city.
Well, right now, our reports are showing that we, we pay almost equal amount of people porting out to other communities and the equal amount coming back in.
Fifteen years ago, more were porting out than were porting in. Then we reached, then we went into a cycle where more were porting in and out. Now, there's about parity.
Wasn't it one part that HUD was reducing your funding, and we were having, you guys were having to look from a public housing standpoint, where you guys were having to have to try to generate revenue to offset that? I, I forget the name of the program.
Asset-based management.
Asset-based management. So, is that still, is that still the direction or the trend that, that HUD is kind of leaning towards?
No, we can't, we cannot mix that voucher money.
Not the voucher, I'm just talking about overall, I know that was some talks at some time.
The challenge would be if HUD continued on the path that it's on, we would have to take people into public housing who were further up the income scale and paid more rent. And indeed, public housing should be paying, paying to support those who are at thirty percent and below, that are most stressed citizens. But the, but the trend line has been, the only way we could survive is get a higher level of income so that we got more rent.
And, and Mr. Vice Mayor, it's complicated because they change the rules every year. Yes, sometimes they'll say, well, we'll give you the rents that you had two or three years ago, and then they say, now we'll give you more money, but we'll peg the rents that you have this year. There's no sort of static formula that HUD uses, it tends to morph every year. And so, but, but definitely it pushes us in that direction, where it gets harder and harder to do that.
My last, I, I really truly appreciate the work and leadership that you guys have provided over Norfolk redevelopment and housing, from a Board standpoint, break down the Cheryl McDonald. Thank you. Handstand, thank you. But I do think that, from a city standpoint, that when we get into revitalizing these communities, so often we don't finish the work. We, we move on to the next project, and we never actually complete. We move on to the next project, and we never actually complete the game plan that is designed for some of these communities that we don't... One of the things that I would like to see, and, you know, us work a lot closer with Norfolk redevelopment and housing authority, to ensure that when we go into these neighborhoods, that we complete the mission within these neighborhoods, and that we're, that, you know, if we're going to go into these neighborhoods, that we're willing to appropriate the resources that associated with what's getting it done. You know, and, you know, I look at how we've been able to be successful in the city of Norfolk in terms of revitalizing a community, but in terms of the being able to go in, we use a combination of funds that you can go into and utilize in some of these neighborhoods. Some communities, I've sat back and I watched where folk don't like to use federal dollars. They want to use straight city dollar CIP funds, you know, where there's no attachments with those resources. But I think throughout the city of Norfolk, that if you want to revitalize some of these neighborhoods, that you've got to be willing to use federal dollars like some of the other communities that are using federal dollars, and not just all CIP money. Because I've seen times where we haven't used CIP money in some areas, and we use 100% federal dollars. And that kind of pigeonholes you in terms of the type of, in terms of lifting the median incomes in certain areas when you do that. So, I would just hope that as we go forward, and we try to bring parity to all of our communities, that we be sensitive to the dollars that we are using, and make sure that as we go forth, that we could use a combination of both, and our conventional wisdom, whether it be from the city's side or Norfolk redevelopment housing side, and that we do come together, whether it be board members, I mean, administration to administration, that you guys create and craft formulas that will get us to the end of developing some of these communities. Because I've seen that we've started in some areas, and we're kind of stuck in the mud right now, because we didn't, we didn't get to that point where we understood the next round of dollars, whether it be federal or city dollars.
Let me, I don't know if there are other questions, but I wanted to sort of leave you with a perspective of the board, that Cheryl summed it up pretty nicely in the PowerPoint, which we're handing out, but we're not like any other governmental or quasi-governmental agency of that. We're stressed fiscally, but we're okay. We're concerned about the future fiscally. We're a $100 million agency a year in this city. The city puts in, of city money, the money that comes from its citizens, about $6 million now. And that number's gone down since 2000, the last six or eight years, from 13,000. The amount of CDBG funds, which is the primary source of federal funds that flow through the city to us, those total funds to the city have decreased over the last number of years, and our percentage has decreased at the same time. So, if you sort of look at the total funding that comes to us, and, you know, it's just, we're just ratcheting down, ratcheting down, ratcheting down, that's pretty much on the development side of the house. And the development side of the house is a smaller part, often is project-based. You know, MacArthur was a project we did. We've done all sorts of projects all over the city, East Beach, of course, Broad Creek. But we're sort of in a situation now, because of the way that we're funded, both from the city and the feds, that if we keep going the way we're going, the development division will not be able to sustain itself long-term, because we're losing the critical mass. And one of the issues that we have, that we think is important to talk about, is to collaborate so that you all fully understand that, that you sort of see what we see and when it's going to come, and that we decide, and this goes to some of the clarification of roles, is there additional work that you can do to create that? So, we've got those issues, the city has those issues, the feds have those issues, and we're going to be okay for a while, but ultimately, we've got to be able to work. And then the last thing that I'd leave you with is, we're scared to death about what's going to happen federally, because if Congress makes a decision, and the whole country will have to face it, I mean, we won't be any different than other housing authorities, but if they make a decision to start cutting funding there, and it's, you know, you've seen plenty of rhetoric about that, then we don't really have a method, we don't have a solution to fix that problem, other than to cut surface. And we already have issues where we don't do what we'd like to do in terms of getting people to self-sufficiency. We'd like to spend a lot more money and spend a lot more time doing that, but we just don't have the money from any source. So, if that happens, you know, those are the types of things, the community resource officers goes away, and the people working with the schools start to go away, and those types of things, we don't maintain as well, and, you know, it's just not a good picture. Now, we don't know that that's going to happen, but that could be a real impact on the city, and the council needs to, you know, work with us to sort of project that and to work through that.
And, Chef, I think that was a good summation. Truth is, the city's been a pretty good partner with this housing authority over time.
Excellent.
And I don't want anybody to leave the table with the notion of somehow the city has stepped back.
No, no.
The $13 million figure you mentioned, that was a combination of funds that were set for development and neighborhoods. The neighborhood figure has been, for what we just talked about through this presentation, has been relatively stable. In fact, Cheryl, you got the institutional memory around here. There was, there were, when I first came on as council, we didn't put any money into neighborhoods that, I mean, with capital dollars from the city, and, you know, that we sent to the housing authority to administer. And now, we're at, we were at six, we have four or five. I think five was for the most part, now it's come down again. But I think what Chef just said about the fact that the federal government may walk away from some of these programs, because of its, you know, the amount of money it's spending is really, and this is discretionary stuff, this is the stuff that they're talking about cutting. There's a, I read something in the paper today, the federal government, they're going to, they need by September 4th to renew the federal gas tax, or that's going to end. Federal highway trust fund could go away. I mean, this, I mean, who would have thought we'd even, and that would even be on the table? But it's, so it's, I think, you know, these people, these are our citizens, we're going to have to be, you know, it's going to be up to us to make sure that we, that we, you know, try to take care of all this stuff that comes down.
Yes, sir, it does. Well, let me ask one thing. I've never touched too much of my ward, but I've always, any moment, always wondered why, versus gym lots and housing, they're doing houses and selling them, or buying lots and selling them, cities doing buying lots and taking back gym lots. Are we not duplicating housing services? First of all, suddenly, like in Park Place, you know, they've been in Park Place a long time, we're in Park Place. I know maybe the ward system scrambles it up, because the council people want to be hands-on, but shouldn't it be an either or? One of them does, one of us does it in the city, or the housing authority does it, and we're not both doing it?
Counselor, I believe that's Cheryl's exact point, is that there's opportunities for us to decide.
Right, it just seems like we're over here, and they're over there, and we're like next door. They got this lot, and we got this lot.
And don't, don't...
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm just from afar, because I'm not involved. I look at the Park Place situation, there's a group working with the Park Place Civic League, and there's a group working with the housing authority. We have special vision, and, I don't know, it just seems like we're headed off in a lot of directions, and we're not communicating, and we're spinning our wheels, just like the Y. I'm not sure I'm involved, but you guys own the Y, and, you know, I guess we're working out of that, so we're parked. But I just, you know, duplication of services, and doing the same thing, one of us should do it better, and we should let the people that we have doing it, but, you know, whatever. I just... Let me make sure I wasn't, not, I wasn't there before when I talked about the city funding. NRHA in the 60s and the 70s and the 80s had lots of work, because there were project-based things.
All over the process, all over downtown.
All over the place. So, we got, we got, we were able to develop a capacity, both in quality and quantity, to do lots of things. Well, that stuff's been done, you know, so now, we're doing the regular day-to-day stuff, and not some of the project stuff. That creates the challenge in and of itself, and we all understand that. So, it's not that the city stepped back, it's like we're in a different phase of the funding. So, the question becomes, and I think the city manager has really been helpful to us, is, are there other things we shouldn't be doing that we're doing, or are there other things that we should be doing that we're not doing, or we duplicated? And we're working through that. So, we're hopeful, and we're excited to work with you all, but we want to make sure we do it efficiently, and that we don't...
Chef, some of the formulas used to drive our funding date from the 70s and the 80s, and are way, way past due for updating. The method by which we are administratively funded is a financial waterboarding model.
That's when Dave, and you had Doyle, and then you had Dennis Richardson, and Cooper, and Gomez, they were all doing their things.
Because we were private...
And the huge staff, and...
I find, I find that in communities that I'm involved working with, Norfolk redevelopment housing authority, when the city and Norfolk redevelopment housing authority are working in those communities, it seems to work. For example, Fairmont Park, you know, we're able to address the commercial as rather the residential with the city and NRHA working in conjunction, Broad Creek in conjunction. Those areas that we don't have that, that relationship, where purely, I look in all the corridor, where we don't have that relationship with NRHA that's in there with us. I don't know, we haven't invited them to the table, but I just think that at some point, you know, you look at everything that you have, you put everything on the table, and look at the entire city corridors as well, and you look at how, you're talking about creating work and opportunities, but from a development standpoint, how do we create, or how do we look at critical mass and be able to develop something to keep the agency going, from a financial standpoint, but at the same time, keep the city going? So, you know, there, I think we work, that the city and NRHA work very well together in areas that I've seen, but I just think that we need to do more. I think that we just need to define our goals and objectives when we go into a community, and finish the work before we start something else, because we got a lot of cans open, but the question is, do we have enough money to finish any of them?
If you had to put a value on developable property, property that's sitting open that the housing authority has, where would you be with that? I mean, I...
Well, the housing authority, they say just think five acres as an example. Most of our properties are developed now, so we've just got a handful of sizable properties. We do have an inventory of single-family lots in the city, but large holdings of real estate, just not there.
So, what are you, and I'm critical of the city, Marcus knows this, about we don't have for-sale signs up on the lots that we do own, that we could get rid of and bring that money back in. Even if you take a slight loss on it, at least you could put a house on it that puts income, you know, tax dollars back in, but, I mean, are we being progressive in trying to get rid of those properties?
They're listed on our website, available to anybody who wants to go and look at them. We take a loss on virtually every property we sell, that's the business we're in.
But what can we do, like, to get Angela interested in showing a family that lot? I'm just saying, like, you know, what are we doing to get real estate agents to the table, to look at these properties that could be open, whether they're city or housing authority owned, to get rid of them? They're just...
Somebody has to pay us as realtors, and NRHA, most of the time, when they have federal money, they cannot pay realtors.
A lot more than the housing...
We don't want to put something back down to Sniggle that was worse than what we took down.
Oh, I know that. I mean, I agree with that. It's just that we have these lots sitting open, and...
They're available if a builder in this market is ready to step with and build, they're available.
There's a difference, Bob. You got infield that's ready, but then you have critical pieces of mass that you're trying to assemble to create something, to add to a community, or to be able to, for example, in some areas, you get 15,000, 14,000 a lot. In some areas now, where we couldn't get five, we're getting 50,000 a lot. And so, you know, there's a lot of lots, a lot of land out there, but at the same time, there are plans that are on the drawing board to be able to create or add to that existing community. So, you got water, sewer, curves, gutters, and all of those, the infrastructure you've got to get put in, before you could even, and stub it up, before you could even put a for-sale sign up there.
Well, I know that. Bob and I have had this conversation multiple times, but the problem is, is that we have studied, we have shredded, we have done everything on all parts of the city, and we have these beautiful plans that sit year after year after year, and we don't move forward with them, because we wait for the right person to come, or the right developer to come in and make an offer to do it. And I don't know if we're not doing enough to go out and seek other people to come in, and it just, it sits there. I mean, we've talked about this property over on the End of Shore Drive and Little Creek Road, that's, you know, that's just sitting there ripe for development, and it's just, there's no for-sale sign, it's not being marketed. Every once in a while, you get a guy who wants to put an extended stay hotel on it or something, you know, but it, we're not, we're not, I don't think we're doing enough to go out there...
That's the conversation that we need to have, city council...
Or land swapping, or even land swapping with people that want to, you know...
The way we did it in 1987 is not going to work in 2012, and yet, we are still trying to do things by direction along those 1987 models. We need a whole new quiver of arrows to get out there and make things happen, and the old ways are not going to work. We've been through a cataclysmic housing event, and we haven't received new marching orders or direction as to how you would like us to do it, and how we should anticipate funding to do it.
Okay, sounds like another discussion we need to have. Sure. Okay, well, we're about at the moment here, so we probably could have gotten started on that question earlier. There's a piece of me that wants, whenever I'm looking, will weigh into it at another time. So, thank you all for coming, it's been a good discussion. We'll try to schedule this, try to schedule it earlier. Okay? Yeah, no matter. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.